I'm gonna have Mayor Pro Tim Angie Reyes English, please do the invocation today. I'll have Councilmember David Patterson, please do the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. If you could all bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for another day. We thank you for your continued wisdom, providing us, Lord, direction in doing the right thing. We ask that you continue to bless those less fortunate. Thank you for safe travel. Thank you to those that are doing the homeless count. We hope to provide housing for those in need and everyday assistance to those that have yet to have of their own. Thank you for our leadership. Thank you for those here that work hard in our city. May continue to bless us, keep us, and keep us mindful of you. Say this in your name, amen.
Amen. First, recognize all of our veterans. Everybody's already standing, so you raise your hand, your veteran, and run a pause. We offer respect, base the flag of your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reason for which it stands, nation of God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Ready? Alright guys, thank you. The roll call, please?
Councilmember Manning, Councilmember Montero.
President.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Yeah, with the lights on, when the red is on, right here.
We, we, yeah.
Angie?
Okay, got it.
Look at it right here, you can tell.
Oh, here, okay.
Okay. Thank you, guys. So, yeah, we're good. We're back in session. It's promising to be a good year this year. Looking forward to a lot of great things here in the city of Hawthorne. A lot of good things have happened recently, and you guys are gonna see that we have very important people, and one of them is Mr. Louis Lopez, who is a professional skater from the city of Hawthorne. Please stand, sir. We had something that we've been looking forward to for a long time, and he really took it upon himself to organize this along with our city staff. I think we have somebody from our Parks and Rec that is here to maybe join him up here at the counter. If you could come up here, please, that would be great. So, I don't know if you guys know this, but the city of Hawthorne has a lot of synergy when it comes to skating. It's a mecca when it comes to skating, and our Hawthorne Skate Park is one of those locations where skaters from all over the South Bay and LA County region come to skate, and it's something that we should be very, very proud about. We haven't highlighted it before, but we've known this, there's been that undercurrent of popularity that was brought to our attention through this event. I wanna defer back to Ms. Brenda and to Louis. If you could tell us about the event. Describe it and what it meant for you, what went into putting the event, and how you feel it impacted the community.
So, on December 23rd, we had a holiday give-back event. On December 23rd, we had a holiday give-back event at Hawthorne Skate Park. And growing up skating, it's kinda something I've always wanted to do, to be able to throw something and give back to the community and inspire the younger kids, so that's what we did. And it was a great turnout. A lot of people showed up and talking to the local skaters. Everyone's hyped and thankful, so I think it was a success, and I can't wait to do more things like that. So, yeah, it was fun.
The vendors that were there, can you tell us about the vendors, big-name vendors?
Yeah, I mean, some of my sponsors donated a lot of product to give out to everybody, so Converse, FA Skateboards, Oakley, Yeti, yeah, just some big names, and they came through and hooked up some products, so it was good.
Alright, and we're in talks about having something over the summer, right? So, even bigger and greater than what we just had, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to keep it going and try to do more events to inspire the youth and just get them stoked on skating, so excited for that.
Awesome, and we definitely are gonna make sure that that skate park is kept up, maybe some modifications that were suggested by the skaters that were there. It's already world-class, but we're gonna even make it even more top-notch than it is now, right, Louis?
Yep. Oh, and by the way, I know when I came last time, I asked if we could make the lights brighter, because the locals were saying they were a little dark, and now they're bright, and they're all excited and thankful, so thank you for doing that.
Alright, that's awesome.
And so Vaughn Norris, our city manager, had challenged our department to find new ways of creating interest. And so in looking at the Eucalyptus Skate Park, it's so underused. It's one of the gems of Hawthorne. And so I started off with just skating classes, and then when Louis approached me about partnering and doing this big event, I was excited to do it, and we just start planning and putting it together. And I'm so glad that it did turn out to be a great success. Thank you, Vaughn, for allowing us to explore those possibilities and to make something magic happen in the city of Hawthorne.
Awesome, so let's give a big round of applause to Louis. So, I'm going to read this certificate of recognition. Louis Lopez, in recognition of your selfless dedication and unwavering commitment to giving back and fostering a positive influence within our community, your passion for the sport and dedication to inspire others makes you a true ambassador. We are extremely proud of you, the city of Good Neighbors, presented this day, the 23rd day of January 2024.
Thank you all.
We have a City of Hawthorne paperweight that we're gonna give you. I mean, it's, you know, pay-you-here paperweight, but it's really cool, you know, it's really cool. You're gonna like that, but most importantly, we don't do this often. We have a key to the city that we don't really give that out.
What?
Key to the city.
Wow, that's insane.
It doesn't open up my room, so I'm safe, but...
Wow.
So, if my council colleagues would like to maybe say some words to Louis?
Yeah, to the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I was watching it on social media, and so I saw all the activity happening out there, and I saw the people, right? They obviously know you, and it's great to see you here in Hawthorne providing that type of activity where the kids can, and ultimately those that are into the sport, right? Use that for its purpose, and so we'd love for you to again come back and provide that, you know, with the help of our Department of Public Works and through the efforts of our city manager. It was a great, a great event. Do you have any family members here that you'd like to also acknowledge?
Yes.
Stand-up family?
I have my dad, my mom, my grandma, my girlfriend, my grandpa, and my best friend.
Yes, congratulations. You have a wonderful son, grandson, yeah.
That's good.
But thank you. I just wanna say thank you and kudos for what you're doing in bringing this heightened sport to those that might not otherwise have a sport or a love for it, right? We did a toy giveaway, and we talked about skateboards, and so maybe this coming year we'll have a push for skateboards to give to those kids for Christmas, so thank you.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Cool, thanks.
Through to chair.
Yes, sir.
Louis, thanks for coming out to the city and having a good time with our kids and showing everybody kind of what's possible. You know, I was a big fan of skateboarding when I was young and never really had any role models to kind of help me kind of stick with it, right? But I actually have a skateboard in my trunk right now that I keep, you know, that I haven't gotten on in a year or so, but it's in my trunk that I jump on every now and then for fun, and definitely appreciate you coming out to our city and just, you know, bringing attention to the great things we have going on in our city, but also not forgetting, you know, forgetting about us, you know, being big time and coming back and showing.
No, no, I mean, that's like a full-circle moment right there, you know, to just be able to do something like that and see people that I saw when I was a kid and come out and be able to give back, so, yeah, it's cool.
That was awesome, thank you.
Sir.
Oh, hi Louis, thank you very much. Unfortunately, I was out of town, but I watch on our social media. I have to say thank you very much to giving back to the community, because everything is about giving back to our community, right? Especially you being a young man, you can bring some other kids involved, and keep this in mind. I want you to bring us the Skate Olympic on the 2028, right down that path, okay? So, yeah, I'm gonna make you the ambassador to go try to do something, even maybe to bring some people just to train before the skateboard. I think probably they're gonna do it in Venice Beach, but we can make some competition.
Yep, I'm gonna tell them, you gotta come to Hawthorne.
Yes.
You gotta come check it out over here.
Show them you're the best, right? So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
For sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Before I ask my councilmember colleagues to go down and join us for a picture, we have a video. Okay, let's get that video going to show you what the event looked like. You guys can appreciate what we saw, and if you didn't get a chance to see it, here you go.
Professional skateboarder Louis Lopez makes a big impact here at Eucalyptus Park with a Day at the Park. American pro skater and Hawthorne native, Louis Lopez first became sponsored at the age of seven. Today, at the age of 29, he has a long list of sponsors and a drive to give back to his own community.
I'm happy that we got to handle this right before Christmas and, you know, have a holiday give-back and give back to the community that I love a lot.
Lopez and many of his sponsors partner with the city of Hawthorne to bring this large event to the skate park.
To experience this and see the lines, the lines of people waiting for prizes and to participate is awesome. I'm very proud that we have that in this community.
The holiday give-back was open to everyone to come by the skate park, commonly known as the Dirty, where Lopez spent hours learning and growing before going pro.
I skateboard for Converse, so we're gonna be giving out shoes, skateboards, you know, just product. People could get some free stuff.
To have someone who wants to stand up and put on for a city, I mean, that's someone that we wanna get behind, and it's really special, so, yeah, Louis is the best.
The shoes being one, weren't just any shoe, they are the Louis Lopez Pro Model Shoe by Converse.
I feel so happy. I've been wanting these shoes, and it's like nice.
For him to bring back everything to the community, it feels amazing.
He's always been like that. He's been a giving person, and he always feels that, you know, whatever he has, he wants to share with everybody, so. And what better way than to put in an event like this and share it with the kids?
Some of the additional prizes came from a variety of other sponsors, including Yeti, Miles, Independent, and Oakley. All you had to do was spin the wheel.
It was like a family reunion today. Your people came and put on a good event. We'll have to be a part of it.
We love you. We love you for this. Thank you and your beautiful family for really pushing to get this event, you know, together.
It's wonderful to give back, for someone to be so globally known, to come back home and say, "Hey, I wanna do something in my community." I think it's wonderful.
Many skaters gathered in the skate park, warming up in bow and ramp before taking a chance at cash for tricks.
I've been skating here for years, and there were some tricks I never seen go down on it, so. People did some amazing tricks, so they got some cash for that.
I did a disco flip, and I got some gift cards and some cash. Yeah, it was pretty, pretty cool. Amazing feeling landing a trick, you know, it's like dominating the skateboard.
I wanted some cash, gift cards, I think a big bag as well, a designer bag as well, and a whole bunch of good times and memories.
To top off this grand event, Lopez and his friends had been full of murmurs they threw out to the crowd.
I think it's so important to see your heroes that are in your neighborhood grow up to do something amazing, like become a professional skateboarder, and it just lets everybody else know that it's possible, or anything that you're dreaming about, you can do it.
I think it went well, and I think all the kids are satisfied. They all got something, and, yeah, that was my main goal, just try to make sure everyone gets something and leaves happy.
Louis Lopez hopes to have inspired the next generation of kids to follow their dreams, no matter how hard they think the road may seem. For HCTV, I'm Jennifer Morillo.
What's important is that we sometimes, we can't do this alone. Louis is a very generous person. He's dedicated to his sport, but he wouldn't be able to be this far, come this far if it weren't for his parents. So, I would like for his parents to please come up, if they're here, to come up and join him, and let's give him a big round of applause. And of course, if there's any other family, mom, dad, tell us a little bit about what it was raising your son and he being a skateboarding fiend.
Hi, everybody. Amazing. Not only is it amazing that he's able to meet his dreams, but that he's a great person at the same time and thinks about others. Yeah, I'm blessed.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
That's sweet.
Is that, she's talking for dad too? Alright, come on dad, say something, this is your opportunity, brother.
It was, I grew up skateboarding myself, so it, I always loved skateboarding. So, the minute he told me, he was like four years old when he told me he wanted to skate, and I was like, "Oh, really?" I got him a skateboard and started taking him to skate park. All the weekends, we would spend skateboarding, and so I love what he does, and he's, I'm proud of the way he turned out.
That's right. Let's give him a big round of applause. So, I'm gonna ask my council colleagues to take a picture with Louis first, so Louis, if you could come around, and mom and dad and any family members, right after we take that picture, if you could join us for a second picture, okay? So, don't go too far. Did you just say your grandfather also skated or something, Louis? Or you just showed, you got him into skating like a couple of years ago?
Alright.
No, I was just saying it looked like that. Like the janitor with all the keys.
Okay. Thank you so much. Oral communications, please?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna ask Daniel Granados to please come up. Daniel?
Good evening, Daniel Granados, manager of Hawthorne Library, part of LA County Library. Just wanted to share a few upcoming programs and events. This Thursday, the 25th, at 10:00 a.m., the Department of Public Health will be providing a free vaccine clinic at the library in our meeting room. They'll be providing the 2023/24 COVID vaccine as well as flu shots. No insurance required, it is free. Let's see, every Thursday at 11:30, we have our toddler storytime, ages two through five. Parents, grandparents, please visit us and bring your little ones. Saturday, January 27th, we have toddler paint at 12:00 noon. And let's see, next month, for February, we have a special guest storyteller, Michael McCarty. Saturday, February 3rd, at 12:00 p.m., kicking off Black History Month, so that's February 3rd at 12. And, sir, whenever you write your book, let me know, we'll get it in the library.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Granados. Marco Trejo? I recognize that last name.
So, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Marco Trejo. I'm actually the owner of Sweet Science Boxing and MMA. We're located on Hawthorne Boulevard, 12935 Hawthorne Boulevard. I've been the owner of Sweet Science Boxing for 15 years. We have a variety of community members that are, or community, I guess, residents that are members of the gym. And so I've owned the gym for 15 years. I've helped a lot, mostly youth, from ages 12 to about 18. I've helped them develop as a person and as an athlete through boxing. In December, I took two athletes to the Olympic trials in Louisiana. So, basically, the best boxers in the country get to compete against the other best boxers in the country to make the Olympic team, and I had two of those that came from here, Hawthorne. We didn't make the Olympic team, unfortunately, but we did get ranked, so I have, right now, I have five boxers that are ranked in the top 10 in the United States. But aside from all that, the reason that I'm here is I wanna propose the creation of a gang prevention program through my boxing gym. The reason that I bring that up is that I've noticed an increase in, well, there's more graffiti up on the walls. I do have a lot of police officers that trained at my gym. I know that gang violence is up, gang recruitment is up as well. Growing up here in Hawthorne, I know that in the 80s and 90s, there was a lot of gangs, and, you know, it kind of dissipated for a while, but it's coming back. So, I'd like to do my part to kind of slow that down. Rather than being reactive to violence, I'd rather be proactive by creating a program through boxing where I teach, where I, my coaches, my program, we teach discipline, self-respect, self-control, and we show these young kids that there's an alternative to gang violence. Now, boxing is a hard sport, but this is the type of thing that the youth need to deter them from, I guess, to be candid, you know, they can be violent and prone to violence and fight on the street. Well, boxing is very, it's a good way to channel all that energy into something positive. Like I said, I've traveled the world with boxers from Hawthorne. I've been to Russia, I've been to Israel, all over the country with boxers that I've trained from this community, and I know that I can change lives. I know that I work with the community, the police department, the council members. I know that I, I work with the community, the police department, the council members. We could develop a program that would, um, that could prevent the, uh, the recruitment and the growth of these gangs before it gets too big. Um, so that's basically why I'm here today. I'd like to propose that. Maybe in the future, we can, uh, we can further discuss in more details, but, uh, yeah, that's pretty much why I'm here. I'd like to make a big change in my community. I've had the gym for fifteen years and I think, uh, you know, um, my dream is eventually to have the, um, to have the boxing gym given to the city. A lot of other cities have their own community program. You know, when I'm ready to retire, I'd like to give the gym to the city, but before that, I wanna make a big change.
Mr. Trejo, thank you so much. Give, let's give him a big round of applause for what he's about to do.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mr. Trejo, I know that your family's been a part of the community. I know your brother over here in the LA Glen area, good guy, you, you, you're a good guy too.
Thank you.
So, um, we need to connect you with our police department because you need to have like, uh, people that are eligible for a program of such nature, maybe for our police department. Um, and if you could also talk to our city manager because, uh, he, they might have ideas as to where we can get, uh, good candidates that would, uh, be, uh, in need of a program like that. Okay?
Absolutely.
So, uh, chief, if you could, uh, just either talk to him or send somebody to talk to him right now, just get his contact info, please? Okay, thank you so much once more.
Thank you.
Marco. Um, and just stay around so that somebody could talk to you, sir, okay? Awesome. Jova Salazar?
Good evening, council members. Uh, my name is Jova Salazar. I live at thirty-seven forty-three West Monty Second Street in Hawthorne since two thousand and ten. I am requesting if you could please reconsider removing a citation CE one twenty-eight zero three. Um, the points for the citation apparently are an avocado tree that overlaps to the property next to mine in the back of the yard. Um, they also, they're also saying that I have lawn maintenance issues. And then, um, somebody that used to live on my property, uh, passed away, uh, probably eighteen months ago and the truck is there, the, uh, plates expire. Uh, the family is going through a lot of financial and emotional issues. So I am requesting, uh, for them to have enough time to decide what they wanna do with their truck. And I also have proved that my, uh, property, my property's lawn has been maintained with minor exceptions and I have pictures from, um, beyond, uh, from before the issue. And then the avocado trees, I've already spoken to, uh, court enforcement, court enforcement, Mr. Gregg, and he says that, um, this issue is beyond the city's jurisdiction. So I don't know, um, what is true and what is not. And then I also, um, want to, um, work, I'm willing to work with the city to propose a program, uh, to develop a program to clean. Uh, there's a lot of garbage throughout the city. Um, there is good people, as we already saw, living within the city. Um, I think there's a lot of things that could be done, I'm willing to volunteer, uh, or be part of, um, uh, some kind of, uh, action to, uh, maintain the city clean of, uh, garbage, like sofas and, I don't know, appliances and some other garbage. Thank you.
Ma'am, uh, without knowing too much details, we're just so short amount of time. If you could, uh, give your information to our city manager, okay? Our city manager right here, the, the guy in the awesome suit with the sharp looking.
Okay, thank you.
City manager that we have. Okay? Is, is there anybody else wishing to address the city council? Please come up to the, to the, to the, uh, podium, please? Whoever's gonna speak needs to line up now.
Good afternoon or good evening. Honorable members of the city council, Mayor Vargas, fellow residents of Hawthorne. My name is Deborah Sturdevent. And I'm here again to remind you guys about the importance of autism. Um, again, I'm asking for you guys to support, um, autism for the month of April, which is our National Autism Walk. Um, the most important thing is, we wanna be able to get out there in the community and, um, help as many people on the spectrum as we can. Uh, most of them go to after-school programs, but it's Monday through Friday. And on the weekend, they don't have anything else to do. So what we do is, we get them out into the neighborhood, out into the community, um, where they can live like the most normal life as they can by being on the spectrum. So we again are proposing that our city of Hawthorne stand behind us and help us create a walk for autism.
Thank you ma'am. Ms. Kyle O'Leary, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, city staff, and neighbors. Once again, it is time for Vietnam Veterans of America South Bay fifty-three chapters, uh, scholarship program. So yet again this year, we are accepting applications for a thousand dollar cash scholarship. I have the flyers here with me, I'll put some on the table out in front and we'll make sure that it's on cable and everything like that as well. So basically, um, you interview, it's for high school seniors and they interview and report on a Vietnam-era veteran. And they also attach some information about, um, what they do on their, you know, and their other activities, et cetera. And the deadline for this is going to be, uh, eleven fifty-nine PM on Sunday, April seventh. That's a hard deadline. The applications have to be put in, um, online. And if you have trouble and can't find a Vietnam veteran to interview for your essay, uh, we will help you find a Vietnam veteran. And so again, that's a, um, a brief essay, a thousand words, but not more than fifteen hundred words, that includes a brief biography of the veteran, including the veteran's branch of service, military unit, dates of active military service, and why you feel, what you feel are the most important things you learned from your interview of the veteran and why. So, um, I will hand out the flyers and put them on the table out in front. A thousand dollar cash scholarship, high school seniors are eligible to apply. Hope to see you soon, bye.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Good evening, my name is Simona Brown and I'm here tonight to represent Holly Park Little League. Um, we're a longstanding community organization in the city of Hawthorne, fifty-plus years, and we really cater to the youth in that, in that area. Most recently, we've been partnering with, not Von, I wanna say Von, but Von's our old contact, uh, Kiwana as well as Jerry. And so more recently, they asked for our calendars. We submitted a calendar, they then returned a calendar and said, none of the dates that we were requesting in order to prepare our youth in the Holly Park Organization to play a full season of baseball and softball. And basically told us that those calendar days were not approved, they were gonna take it back despite us having the permits for fifty-plus years. Um, I like to say that it appears as though they are trying to give our field space to high school organizations as, as well as the RBI Dream Team Organization. I like to point out that our first priority is the kids of Holly Park. It is absolutely, um, our advocacy that, that gets them far, that gets them through college, that gets them through high school level softball and baseball programs. Me specifically, I was born and raised in the city of Hawthorne, played in at least three different youth organizations representing softball, and actually represented the city of Hawthorne in the World Series. So I'm, I'm a true product of what that could look like. Paid for my college education, didn't have to pay anything, and these kids are on that same track. Um, on Friday, I went to go speak to Mayor Vargas and I, which resulted in me having a conversation with him this past Sunday. He was the only one that was privy to this conversation because I had it directly with him. Despite me not having that conversation until Sunday, our board received a call from Jerry, basically telling us that if I continued to pursue this, it was going to ruin the relationship between Holly Park Little League and the city of Hawthorne, which I find very, very discriminatory. Today, it resulted in a call saying, well now, the mayor is asking for your calendars, your enrollment, all of these other documents, but the Hawthorne High School isn't being asked for that, DaVinci isn't being asked for that, um, the RBI program, the Dream Team isn't being asked for that, so why are we being asked for that despite us being the longstanding community members within the city of Hawthorne? So a couple of questions. Um, so just like you guys are asking us, we'd like to ask you. How many kids are in the Dodger program? How much is, is there in funding? Why can't there be some sort of compromise to where maybe you fold those kids in the RBI and Dream Team programs into Holly Park Little League? We don't have any pushback about wearing the Dodger uniforms or representing in that regard? Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you ma'am. Oh, I didn't ask for any of that. I have no involvement in that issue ma'am, so whoever told you that, that's false. Um, but, uh, I think it's important that the board sits down with our leadership here, uh, to source that out. If that hasn't happened, it needs to happen, okay? Before we even know where everything's headed, so I think it's, um, I don't wanna say premature, but we just don't know where everything's gonna lay, right? Just, just. No, 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 there's no, there's no, yeah. We, we, we took everything into record, Mr. City Manager, if you could coordinate that meeting? If it hasn't happened yet, please? Pardon me? It did?
Yes, it did. And the city manager actually requested the information.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry then. We'll let, let everything like, end up where it ends up, so we'll find out, okay ma'am? Thank you for sharing your concern though too. Uh, anybody else wishing to address the city council? Former Mayor Chris Brown? Hi sir, how are you doing?
Was good, council, hope all is well. Um, listen, with all the crime and stuff going on in the city, it's not your fault. And all I can do is say you guys should implore the police department and give them resources to fight against, what is it, four or five deaths over the last, what, five, six weeks in the city? And, um, it hasn't been a string of crime in the city since Larry Guidi, to be honest with you. And, but that's not, no one's fault here. Um, so just give the police department more of what they need and you guys continue to sell. You guys have been doing an amazing job here. I'll give it up to the mayor, the council, and everyone. And, uh, it looks beautiful, so I just wanna say keep up the good work and ignore all the noise.
Thank you sir, and we hope you're doing well, okay? Awesome, thank you for being here.
Good to see you, Chris.
Anybody else wishing to address the city council? If not, I declare oral communications close ordered. City clerk, you have a consent calendar ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I have two items on the consent calendar. There are items two and three for your consideration and approval. Item two, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item three, city treasurer requests approval for the warrants for January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All right, uh, let's, uh, set up our voting block here, right here. Oh, okay. So we're voting on item two and three, it's on our displays. Does everybody have it on their displays?
It says item two and three.
Just hit, um, just hit the button and it should pop up, hit the button downstairs. You haven't entered an answer, right? You see where it's at? You're good?
Hey, I got it now, you gotta double hit.
Yeah, you good?
Yeah.
Has everybody entered their vote? All right.
The votes are in?
Yes ma'am.
The voting reflects council, mayor and council voting, yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, city clerk. Ord, um, ordinances, please? Can you read the ordinance?
Item four, ordinance number two two five zero, the first reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, setting the compensation of the mayor and council members commencing January first, two thousand twenty-five, and making a finding of exemption and compliance with SEQA in connection therewith for introduction.
I'll introduce.
Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, the agenda reflects that you have items five through eight on the city manager's consent calendar. Uh, can you please, uh, proceed by introducing each one of them?
Item five, progress payment number five in the amount of two hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty dollars and three cents due to Elicnor Belco Electric of Chino, California for Hawthorne Boulevard Mobility Improvement Project Phase Two, project number two-three dash zero one. Item six, award of contract for alley improvement project, CDBG Funds, project number two-four dash zero six. Item seven, progress payment number eight in the amount of two hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred ten dollars, forty-two cents due to Elicnor Belco Electric of Chino, California for Highway Safety Improvement Project, Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, one hundred and twentieth Street Improvement Project, Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue, project number two-one dash zero six. Item eight, First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement by and between the city of Hawthorne and Think and Make Design Firm for Consultant Services. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items five through eight?
I move? Second. All right, set up your. Please vote.
The votes are in?
Yes ma'am.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
We have a closed session coming up pretty soon, but before that, we have item number nine.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, item, item nine will actually be, um, put on a different agenda. It will be pushed to a different meeting.
This is an error?
This is per.
Okay.
For councilman.
No, I asked to move it to a future meeting. I wanted it to have, I wanted this discussion to happen after we've gotten some, uh, results back from the city manager's, um, polling of the community.
We'll table this.
Okay. It is your discussion action item, so we will concede that. I'll be making a statement regarding that at the end, about charters as a whole. Next, we have elected officials reports, recommendations. Uh, we, Mr. City Clerk?
I just wanna thank everyone for coming out. It's good to see so many people come to a meeting and, uh, just whoever I haven't seen since the new year, happy new year and, uh, the start of the new year has been great and we're just excited to, uh, have everyone here today. Uh, the skate, oh, the skate family left. Uh, very excited to see that, that looked like a lot of fun. Uh, and just, uh, thank you all so much for coming, have a great evening, a safe evening.
Uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Wanted to thank the community for coming out and participating in the process, making your voices heard, uh, and just getting involved. Um, you know, we're here at your disposal to, to serve the community's needs, so we definitely appreciate having you guys out here. Want to thank staff for all of your hard work. There's always so many different events that you guys are working on in addition to your day-to-day activities, as well as our police department. I know there's a lot been going on, um, in the community, so I know it's been keeping you guys pretty busy. Couple comments, requests and directives. Sweet Science had a idea of a gang prevention program and, you know, I'm not sure what's gonna become of that, but I'm just curious if the city attorney's office could work with such a program and propose some type of diversion, you know, recommendations in the, in the prosecution department. And, you know, if you can just kind of find the time for us to talk about it and figure out, you know, what's possible, I'm gonna reach out to him myself to kind of see how I can support that, that, that program. Let's see, I have a few notes on my phone. I got an email from a gentleman who's having some challenges with his landlord and, and something came up, uh, in that conversation. I wanted to see if the city can look into, um, setting a relocation allowance, uh, when tenants are looking to move out tenants, when landlords are looking to move out tenants. Uh, to my understanding, we don't have a relocation allowance or schedule. So if, if the city attorney can give me, or, or whoever, um, what we need to know about that topic, um, so we can make a recommendation, maybe bring it as a discussion I have in the future for the council to talk about. I'd like to ask the city attorney to provide another, um, presentation about city charters. Uh, it was a previous conversation that I had that, uh, allowed me to understand how. if Hawthorne was a charter city, we would have been able to make some, um, some certain moves, uh, regarding economic development in our city that we had tried to do, but weren't able to do because we're a general law city. And so, I'd like for him to come and kind of talk about what, uh, charters kind of entails and, and some of the flexibility that allows us, and how that can benefit economic development efforts. Uh, also, if you can give us a kind of a timeline, um, as to how long it would take if we wanted to put together another charter proposal? Um, and, you know, what's the time, what's the requirements of getting it on the, on the ballot? I'd like to ask, uh, if Chief Ishi could, i- and if you haven't done this already, reach out to many of the Gardens kind of community and some of those areas where we've had some violence in the city, and just make sure that there's an open line of kind of dialogue. And, you know, they, you know, we are doing our community policing full force. I know we got a lot of police off, good police officers on our, on our department. And want to make sure our community knows that and knows them, and, and they feel safe.
It's Chief Tamatani.
What, what did I say?
Ishi.
Oh, well, you know.
It's okay.
Getting old. Getting old. Much ass threw me off, I didn't really recognize him anymore. City Manager, you put together a really nice newsletter that you email out about kind of the goings-on in the community. Uh, could you look into the feasibility of putting that kind of in print and distributing it throughout the community? So it's not just kind of an email newsletter to, to a certain few individuals? That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Alex Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, good evening everyone, uh, thank you for coming, and thank you for those at home. Uh, first, I want to say, uh, Happy New Year to everyone. I wasn't here, uh, for our first meeting in January, I was in some, uh, business. But I want to say thank you to all the city staff and departments, because, you know, our city, you know, I see all of them on the street, working, uh, 24/7. And I have to say, I know my head goes to the Hawthorne Police Department, uh, because, uh, like some, uh, constituents have said, you know, it's been a very busy month so far. Uh, but, uh, thanks God that we have an outstanding police department, and they've been doing a lot of, uh, community policing. And even this morning, they were at, uh, Home Depot, uh, you know, having coffee with some individual. So we've been doing, um, a lot of prevention, and I have to say, you know, Chief Tamatani is, uh, we had a long conversation on, on Tuesday, so I know he's, uh, up to the task, and he's been, uh, making sure that all the, the captains and the officers, um, well-equipped, and he got our unconditional support and love from these guys. So, um, we're gonna do everything possible to prevent, uh, more crime and more shooting. And actually, this week is the, the National Gun Violence Survival Week, from the 26, from the 22 to the 26, uh, for all those, uh, gun violence and be going on around the country and in our community. So, um, my deepest condolences goes to those who have lost lives and, and, and friends and families to the community. Just on the other note, um, we have things coming up. You know, like the Hawthorne Stock Society is gonna have a hometown pancake breakfast. It's already scheduled for April 13th, so put a new calendar, April 13th, from 8:00 AM to 11:30 at the Jim Thorpe Park, you know, uh, at the museum. The Parks and Rec Foundation is gonna have the golf tournament. Uh, so, if you play golf, you know, make sure it's the 33rd Annual Golf Tournament on March 18th at the Rio Honda Golf Club. And you know that, uh, Parks and Rec's Foundation raised money to improve our parks facilities, so, uh, it's a good cause for them. Again, I want to say thank you to Louis, uh, you know, for the skateboarding event, uh, that was a lot of fun. And we need to do more things for our community. So those are the kind of programs that would prevent kids and even young adults to, to join gang. Because of, um, as you would call it, like the Monita Gardens Improvement, MGI, was formed in 1995 as a gang prevention program from the Hawthorne School District. And it was to prevent gangs on that time, 'cause you know how 1995, uh, we had 13 known guns in Hawthorne. So, and things have come far, far away. So now, you know, we don't see too much gang activity, but like the gentleman from the boxing, uh, facility was talking about, gang prevention program, and I know, you know, our, our Police Department have a good gang, gang prevention unit there. Uh, and we have, in the past, collaborated with the sheriff, with Lennox, uh, some other cities that do gang prevention in our area. So I know, um, it will be easy for us to kick off the gang prevention program in collaboration with the Hawthorne and, and our, and people in other community that want to get involved, and I think we can do it. The other thing that I want to mention, I'm gonna have a birthday party. Saturday the 27th, at 6:00 PM at the Hawthorne Moose Lodge. Uh, so, um, it is a fundraising party, so it's not free, but you will eat very good, 'cause I'm cooking prime ribs, uh, pasta salmon, and kune shhheim. So, stop by at 6 o'clock PM on Hawthorne Moose Lodge at 132nd and Inglewood Avenue. The other thing that I'm gonna be doing in collaboration with the, uh, the President of the Kiwanis, Mister Mo Adwadala, and also the Mission, uh, Love Mission, and the World United Health, we're going to do a vote, voting registration drive in conjunction with a food drive. So, on February 3rd, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, at the Berrylands Ward Parking Lot, it's gonna be a drive-through, a vote registration drive, and a food giveaway. And we're gonna have, uh, frozen enchiladas, ready to eat. Uh, we're gonna have fruit and veggies, and also, um, some type of meat product, okay? So you're gonna have a whole full of things. So, so we're gonna have a lot of food giveaway on February 3rd at the Berrylands Ward Parking Lot. And just FYing to my colleagues, there was a letter sent, I might, I might go forward to you. Uh, I already signed it. Uh, remember about the Utility Tax that you guys discussed the last time? So I got the, I got a letter that is being sent to the, to the governor and to the legislator opposing that bill. So I already signed it, so it's a very good construction letter, so, uh, make sure that you guys read it and, and sign it. I appreciate it, uh, because they send it as, uh, because Hawthorne is part of the Clean Power Alliance, and we want to make sure that, uh, people that do not utilize too many energy is not penalized by paying an additional utility tax, right? So, uh, I signed the letter, so it's right here. And I think that's, oh, uh, Vaughn. It's, it's gonna be for Vaughn and Agbar. You know how I go charge my Tesla at the Medici Parking Lot? If we can put some signs saying "No Leering," because people now going there, they leaving their trash behind. They throwing, it's, it's, it's looking pretty bad now.
Where's this at?
Right here at the Medici, uh, Parking Lot, Marriott Hotel.
Over here?
The Marriott.
Okay, you're pointing.
It's right there.
Right here.
Right over here, brother, right behind us.
Well, but the entrance is right here.
No, 126 is right here.
No, but...
No, actually, it's right there.
It's right there, because it's, it's right there, because the Medici Restaurant.
It's right there.
Uh, okay, because it's right there.
So... Wow, dude, I would have...
Because, you know, it, it's becoming ridiculous. People, and I understand, these people that own Tesla, Tesla's not just a cheap car. And, but they have no shame. And, oh, they sit down in the car and eat, and then they leave all the trash on, on the ground. So, and understanding ma'am about cleaning up Hawthorne, that's been my dream for 25 years. Uh, I wish, you know, uh, and that's what, you know, we've been doing community cleanup every year, at least twice a year, and telling people about not put trash, but they still not understanding. So, definitely, you know, I would love to see an aggressive campaign about clean up our city. And, and, and actually, you know, if I could, have drones, you know, going around and seeing who's putting the trash out, and find them big time. I would, I would do that, to tell you the truth. Uh, because it's a seat of good neighbors, uh, we're doing our best, you know, to, to keep it clean, but we got some, I don't know, I don't want to call them criminals, but it's almost like it's a criminal, how, what they're doing. So, uh, again, you know, thank you, uh, it's been 2024, have begin with a bang, and we have to keep eyeing our community, be vigilant, and call the dispatch, you know, if you see any activities going on in neighborhoods, uh, because like I said, you know, we need to watch, uh, for each other, because we have to have, uh, a conscience, because, um, our Police Department, you know, we're still recruiting, right? We need more office, so, uh, we're trying to do our best, but recruiting's been challenged. Uh, so, if you know anybody who wants to be a police officer, send them to the chief, okay? So God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you sir, uh, we do have a go-back, but please, out in the audience, please turn off your cellphones, Mister Ronnie, and, or anybody else who has that one that, uh, is on, okay? Out of courtesy for the speakers here, please.
I appreciate him, be brief, um, one, I want to thank, uh, is it Marco from, uh, Sweet Science? He's referred a number of people to our Police Department who are interested in joining our, our ranks, so definitely appreciate that. Uh, we have a, um, a poll for the community to, to take, it's on our social media, it's on our website. Uh, take a look at it, just a minute or so, ask a few questions, get your feedback about the community. But really, I wanted to thank our staff for organizing the Free Tax Prep at the Senior Center. Uh, we haven't had it in a while, Mayor Pro Tim Reyes English had, uh, used to organize this, uh, for a number of years, and, and we hadn't had it for the last couple of years, and, you know, I brought it up, and, and, um, I believe Brenda and the rest of the staff kind of reached out and, and made sure that we brought this Free Tax Preparation back to the city. It's gonna be March 2nd through April 20th, Saturdays only, at the Senior Center, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Uh, additionally, we have a few housing workshops, uh, coming up. We have, take a look at our website, but some landlord-tenant clinics, uh, virtual, uh, Fair Housing Workshop. Take a look at our website, all the information's there, I want to make sure that, you know, all of our residents get all the resources that they need. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, some announcements, there's a homeless count tomorrow, Wednesday, January 24th, from 6:30 to 10:00 at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. It's an annual, uh, homeless count, uh, provided by Greater Los Angeles Lasa, Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority. Uh, if you know of anyone that is sleeping on a couch, they are considered homeless. So, um, it's just not those that are, um, on our highways, freeways, byways, uh, street, um, and/or our storefronts, it's, um, those two that don't have a home and are sleeping currently on a couch. So make sure we have, um, you know, the numbers right, so that we could have an accurate count here in the City of Hawthorne, how many we have. Uh, at the same time, very fortunate that the city took an aggressive move in building out our, um, Bridge of Hope Housing, and is providing assistance to, uh, some residents, I believe it's 14, 15, how many houses that we have? I think it's 15 tiny homes? 12, okay, I'm hoping too much, huh? Well, 12, and some of the times they're already full, but, um, just to give you some ideas how we're helping to address the homeless, um, issue. Uh, we have a Fair Housing Foundation Virtual, uh, Fair Housing Workshop, uh, do's and don'ts. This is basically for those that are renters. Um, it is for Tuesday, January 30th, from 1:30 to 3:00, open to Hawthorne residents. And I hope that a lot of these, um, flyers that I'm reading here are outside in the lobby, so that you could walk home with, uh, the information if that interests you. There's also a Landlord-Tenant Walk-In Clinic, and that's for landlord and tenant, uh, Monday, February 5th, from 2:00 to 4:00 here at the Housing Department at City Hall. You heard a little bit about the, uh, survey that we're taking on social media. If you happen to see it, please take part in that to help us. Um, and then kudos to Councilmember Montero and his upcoming event on February 3rd from 10:00 to 12:00 noon at Memorial Center with regards to registration drive and a food giveaway. Um, we had, uh, California Edison at our last council meeting, that spoke about the potential, uh, increase on our ratepayers. We stood strong with regards to, um, our stance on the position, and we had a lot of questions for the representatives here from California Edison. One of the proposed, um, items that they're discussing is AB 205, which has to do with an increase on the ratepayer of, uh, anywhere between $30 to $50 per household. And so that's a huge amount, uh, chunk of money to pay for, um, you know, California Edison. Um, however, um, we did, uh, sent a letter, uh, to those, um, in Sacramento that we opposed it. Um, but I want to direct council, uh, excuse me, City Manager, to look into, um, how solar panels, those houses that have solar panels here in Hawthorne, um, how that's gonna affect them and or not. Because, again, you know, we're responsible, um, ratepayers. We, we know, um, how much wattage we're using, how much, uh, we want to turn on our lights on or off, and we're conscious of that, especially for those, um, through, you know, hard times and challenges not being able to afford that. So, just want to make sure that we're also paying attention to solar panels and homeowners that have solar panels. I want to see the letter, if you could get the letter that, uh, Councilmember Montero signed, to make sure all the council members and the mayor have it, so that we could also sign and be on one accord. Want to thank all of those that attended today, our council meeting, and, uh, provided great information. Um, if there's a proposal of any sort that you're proposing to the city, it's best to write up your proposal. Uh, make sure that you have all of it, uh, covered with regards to what you're proposing, and you could forward that via email to, um, the City Manager. Um, proposals are great when we look at them in writing, and we could help, uh, steer that along. It's difficult when it's in language form and being proposed, however, um, that's the best way of communicating on any front, by email and, and making that clear. Congratulations to City Clerk on your new grandbaby. I also want to thank our staff for attending the West Basin Water Facility Tour today. I want to ask City Manager if you could maybe propose a facility tour to our residents here in Hawthorne, and maybe see, uh, in the next couple of months, if there's residents that are interested in, uh, taking a tour of our water facility at West Basin. Maybe we could do a transport from City Hall to the center, and, um, give them, uh, that opportunity to see exactly where our water comes from. Let's see, what else is good? We're off to a great start, I hope that the residents also, um, listen to, uh, some of the information that's out in the community with regards to a new proposed Civic Center. We're looking to build out the Civic Center, and we're looking to, um, make this a new, a long time coming. And so, that's gonna be made public, uh, and you're gonna be able to participate in that, and we want you to participate in that. We have great opportunities with regards to growing out our city, and, um, anything we could do to help in those efforts, especially knowing that we have great synergy from the City of Inglewood and what's being proposed there, with the new Clippers Stadium, SoFi Stadium, uh, over in El Segundo with the Chargers Stadium. We have the Lakers, we have the Kings, and at some point in time, I'm hoping that the City of Hawthorne could also have a sports and entertainment, uh, club here. And so that's my push. We're right off the 105, close to the 405, the Harbor 110, LAX. And so, we are the city that they're gonna be looking for in 2028 to host some of the things here. So we need to move, uh, in a direction that's gonna prosper us too, not just those other cities. They like to use our, our parking lots, they like to use our transportation, but at some point, we're gonna have to build out our own, so that we could make, um, what we need to do here to secure Hawthorne for its future, and, um, provide services that are greatly needed in the City of Hawthorne and its residents. I was appointed recently to Lawa, uh, not Lawa, Los Angeles, uh, World Airport's, um, Advisory Committee. Myself and Katrina sits on that, um, and we basically provide, um, um, advice to the upper board. And it has anything to do with, um, airport noise, pollution... has anything to do with airport noise, pollution, and those alike. I also was recently voted and appointed to Los Angeles LAFCO, L-A-F-C-O, which is a body made up of elected members that oversee boundaries, special districts, and communities. And so, that's with LA County, and I look forward to those discussions. There's 88 cities in the county. Whenever there's a special district or borders that are being drawn up, obviously, it takes a body to review all of that and be on agreement to pass anything. However, we want to just make sure that the commission is a diverse commission. It is one that represents what we look like in the community, and more importantly, is fair. And so, I'm very happy to know that my voice was heard, and I was appointed, and look forward to working with that agency. Again, thank you all for participating tonight, being here tonight, for your love for baseball, for your love for skateboarding. Can't say enough. Your passions might not necessarily be our passions, and our passions might not be your passions, but at the end of the day, we work collectively together to assure that there's fairness. And so, yeah, look forward again to what we have coming down the road, and I hope that you guys stay tuned and stay engaged because we really need your help too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any go backs today? All right. And the reason I say that is for the future meetings, we'll just, we won't have any go backs, everybody needs to complete their thoughts at the, at their respective times, just so that we can have a steady flow, that's all, but today's cool. I don't have much, but piggybacking on what the Mayor Protem said, we, the city of Hawthorne has marked out its own path, the path, its path of its own. We understand, and we always refer to Inguo doing what they're doing, et cetera. So, our success has been independent of all that, to be honest with you. One of our, the important things that we've established is the hotel corridor along Imperial Highway that has served as an alternative to the hotels that are at LAX. Many traveler has decided to stay here as opposed to paying the, what they pay over there to stay at many, any of the four, five hotels that we have along the corridor. So, that's reason to celebrate. That was our planning way ahead of the SoFi Stadium, having been even thought of. So, I want to commend our staff, the staff from a while back that has set that in motion, and our staff and our city manager who has continued to push that along. So, I think we should just be very conscious of that and make sure that we're, try to be supportive of the hotel industry here in the city of Hawthorne, any projects that they have, because that's very important for us. It's an economic base for us. So, let's just celebrate that and just see what we can do to move things along with any project that might be dealing with the hotel industry. So, I'd, I've heard the discussion about sports and the Little League and everything, so I think there's a, the city of Hawthorne has been a central point for sports, and I just want to let you guys know that there's a lot to celebrate compared to any other cities, really, to be honest with you. I mean, we have like a world-class skating park that all kids like to come to, you know, locally from the region. That's something to celebrate. You saw Mr. Louis Lopez, you know, big icon there. We have Little League, we have a slew of, a slate of Little Leagues that we have here in the city of Hawthorne. And also, we have the AYSO. AYSO, the youth soccer organization, was founded essentially, basically here and moved quickly after, soon after to Torrance, but it was founded here in the city of Hawthorne. People don't know that. That's why we have a lot of good soccer players coming out of here, Region 21. Gasi Sardes played for the Galaxy and played for the national team. So, there's a lot to be, Curtis Conway, high school, high school track star and his relay team that won CIF statewide. Curtis Conway ended up playing football and running track, and there was another, Mr. Marsh, I forgot the last name Marsh as well. Mike Marsh? Yeah, right, out of the city of Hawthorne, guys. Jim Thorpe lived here in the city of Hawthorne. Russell Westbrook, I mean, I mean, you guys are not necessarily happy with his performance, but there was a time where he was like kicking butt, right? Fred Drier is from the city of Hawthorne, a football player, and what was the movie, what was this? Hunter, he was Hunter, right? Out of the city of Hawthorne. So, a lot to celebrate, guys. So, let's give it up to all our sports team. We even have an ice hockey team that's sponsored by the police department, and of course, we've always had Pop Warner in the background too, right? So, let's celebrate all that stuff. So, we, the city of Hawthorne is supportive of the sports programs, and I guess the problem happens when all these sports programs want to take part and participate and get access to resources. So, I mean, it's understandable that there might be some, you know, challenges for the, for the fields and rec centers, et cetera. I also just want to bring one attention again to what's happening in the Middle East, in Palestine, Israel. A lot of people are passing away. We should just reflect on that and just pray for peace, that everybody starts looking at things different over there and that they just do what they have to do to get along and find a happy, happy place so that they could work and live happily together. It might not happen soon, but through our prayers, our thoughts, our good vibes, hopefully something will change soon, real soon, because it's just getting out of hand, right? So, if you guys could pray on your own, that'd be great. Thank you to my colleagues for today's meeting. It's 7:17. It's promising to be probably the shortest meeting that we've had, but we have a closed session. Is anybody wanting to address item 10 and 11? Ms. City Clerk, do I have any cards for it?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Seeing no one, if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed ordered. We will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 7:17. We are in recess.
The city of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of section 12.04.031 is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
How to obtain a business certificate in the city of Hawthorne? First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, et cetera. To obtain a business tax certificate in the city of Hawthorne, check local zoning regulations. Come to the business license office for the business license or tax certificate packet. There's also a downloadable version online at www.cityofhawthorne.org/departments/finance/licensing/licensing-forms. Submit your completed application to the business license office for processing. Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate. Not all items listed will apply. You may ask who will review your application for approval. The application will first go to the planning department to confirm the potential location is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the planning office, and they will send you back to business licensing if approved to pay for the business tax certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a business tax certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the city of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our building and safety department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? Follow-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to the Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address such as excessive calls and more. The city manager and finally, the city attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken, and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note, if your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know, business tax certificates expire December 31st and renew annually January 1st to 31st. Taxes paid after January 31st will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the licensing office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The city does not accept partial payments. If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the city of Hawthorne. of Hawthorne.
First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, etc. To obtain a business tax certificate in the City of Hawthorne, check local zoning regulations. Come to the Business License Office for the Business License or Tax Certificate Packet. There's also a downloadable version online at www.cityofhawthorne.org/departments/finance/licensing/licensing-forms. Submit your completed application to the Business License Office for processing. Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate. Not all items listed will apply. You may ask who will review your application for approval. The application will first go to the Planning Department to confirm the potential location is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the Planning Office and they will send you back to Business Licensing if approved to pay for the business tax certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a business tax certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the City of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our Building and Safety Department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? Follow-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to the Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address such as excessive calls and more. The City Manager and finally the City Attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken, and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note: If your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know: Business tax certificates expire December 31st and renew annually January 1st to 31st. Taxes paid after January 31st will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the Licensing Office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The City does not accept partial payments. If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the City of Hawthorne.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Commissioner Daniel Lucero with the Hawthorne Veteran Affairs Commission. The Veteran Affairs Commission is proud to announce our inaugural Military Banner Recognition Program to honor our local Hawthorne military heroes. Banners will be placed from 120th to Rose Grant's Avenue along Hawthorne Boulevard and will fly from Memorial to Veterans Day. Banner honorees must be current military personnel who are honorably serving in the United States Armed Forces, or a military veteran who has honorably served in the past, to include those who are now deceased. Each banner costs $300. If you would like to sponsor a veteran, donations and honorary payments can be coordinated with one of the commissioners or dropped off at Hawthorne City Hall's Human Resources.
Counsel is back in session at 7:53. Mr. City Attorney, can you guide us through the next steps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to first read out the agenda items for the closed session. Number 10 was a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 Subsection D1. Name of case was Hawthorne Airport LLC versus City of Hawthorne, Los Angeles County Superior Court Case Number 22TRCV01306. It's related to Number 11, which is conference with legal counsel, real property negotiation pursuant to Section 54956.8 of the California Government Code. Hawthorne Municipal Airport is the property. Property address is 12101 Crenshaw Boulevard, Hawthorne, California 90250. City negotiator is Robert Kim. City Attorney, negotiation with attorneys for Hawthorne Airport LLC. Levi Stockton is the president. Under negotiation price and terms of Fourth Amendment master ground lease. The counsel and the mayor have met in closed session and unanimously voted to approve on Number 10, the settlement with Hawthorne Airport LLC. The essential terms are that Hawthorne Airport LLC will forward the monthly lease payment from SpaceX of $9,166 to the city, excuse me. And the plaintiff may apply to develop that property. City retains all prior rent payments submitted by Zellman. Instead of build-out of a wash rack at the airport, plaintiff will pay the city $65,000. City will act in good faith and not prejudice the plaintiff if they apply for two electronic LED digital light billboards. Based on the master ground provision, plaintiff is entitled to extension on their master ground lease by a few years and city will extend that so that the master ground lease will expire in year 2055. That will make the master ground lease full 50-year term. City Council also met in closed session and have unanimously approved the Fourth Amendment amendment to the master ground lease that allows the extension to year 2055 and that will allow development on the controverted section of the airport if all the permits are granted by the proper governmental authority, including the city and the FAA.
That's it? That's it, Mr. City Attorney?
That's it.
Thank you. There's nothing further from counsel or staff. This meeting is adjourned at 7:56 PM.